...is the actual open meeting act. I would ask that you stand, join with us in a moment of silence and as well the pledge of allegiance.
[inaudible]
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll continue with roll call. Granquist.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Clausen.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Moaning.
Here.
Faust.
Here.
File.
Here.
All right, and I would ask for approval of the consent agenda as was provided you.
So move.
Second.
Oops. After reading the agenda for the next council meeting, I noticed this is coming from Mr. Goodwater, that I put down October 14th, 2014th as a date rather than October 4th. So what we will need to do is remove item 11 from the consent agenda and we'll put it on the regular agenda. So if I could ask that that motion be amended with the removal of item 11, whoever made that motion, was that?
I'll ask for the removal of that item.
All right, then approval of-
As amended.
Okay. And the second as well?
Second.
All right. So with that, if you would please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right, and then with the addition of item 11 to the full agenda, I would ask for approval of that full agenda.
Your honor, I would make that motion, but I would like to move number 35 to the top of the list if we could to accept the airport levy first.
We can do that. How about if we put that under, right after the special presentations?
That would be perfect.
Second.
All right. Motion with the second, if you would please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right. We'll go forward with our special presentations. First up is our Youth Leadership Council, who would like to come forward and discuss some of their ideas for future, as elected, to the elected officials for projects that they would like to be doing for this community. So if you would, we'll ask you to state your name and you're gonna be, it's gonna be necessary for you to sign in for us as well, so.
One here, okay. Hi, I'm Courtney Cowling and I'm from Norfolk Youth Leadership Council and I'm the president.
I'm Eli Henry and I'm also on the council and I'm the treasurer.
I'm Jesse Burgiston, I'm on the council as a representative.
And today we kinda wanna just tell you guys what we are doing for our community. We just started our year, so we don't have too many things started, but Norfolk Youth Leadership Council is a group kinda set up to give the students of the Norfolk community a voice with the public and they will talk about some of our activities that we do.
Last Tuesday night, we held our first open mic night at the Art Center. We provided, we provided food for people to come. It was directed towards teenagers and we had a good turnout. Many read poems, some sang songs, some played guitar and drums, so we had a variety of different talents that were shown that night. We had a free world donation jar that was on a table for the sign-in and we are donating that money to the Art Center.
Very nice.
And Jesse's going to talk about some of our future projects that we are looking into.
Hello. Some things that we have discussed are raising money for the library and also we're talking about possibly doing a public service announcement for driving safety and other things that we might want to tell people of all ages. And we are currently looking into a movie night and a location to where we could hold this. Now, none of these are fully planned yet, but they're well on the way to happening.
And we have our meetings on the first and the third Sunday of each month, so they line up with the city council meetings, very good. And this year, we're looking into doing more press releases than we have done in previous years, just to kinda let the community know what we think on subjects. And we are also going to try to get more of our members to your meetings, so we can kinda know what's going on for sure. So we are going to print out your guys' agendas, so we can look through them the day before the meeting and since we are, many of our members are so active with their school, it's hard for them to get to these meetings, but we're going to try to have as many of our members at the meetings as we can. And one final thing, we are just looking for more ideas, so if you guys have any ideas for us or you have any advice or things you'd just like to share with us, or if you'd like to come visit us at one of our meetings, we'd love that. And we have an email address that if you guys would like, you can get ahold of us after the meeting and get that from us. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from any of you?
No.
I appreciate your efforts. I always enjoy coming and listening to what goes on at the meetings, believe me. It's a group of very engaged young people and if I understood right, there's what, about 20 members this year?
Yes.
Okay, representing the three different high schools here?
Yes.
Okay, well, very good. Keep up the work, Mr. Porcel. Thank you for what it is you do for them and with them, so appreciate having you here too.
Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna have a quick update now on the SID 1 Staten County Woodland Park sewer issues. Here to talk about that-
Very, very quick, your honor. We are in a process, staff's in the process of putting the final touches on the agreement that we've been working on, that they've agreed to, and we did the memorandum of understanding, which had the major talking points involved in there and they obviously agreed to that. So we're just putting the final details onto the agreement and having discussions between their legal counsel and their, their staff as well as some of their elected officials that are involved in that and we should have something back to the council's review here before too much longer.
Okay. Any questions at all, council? All right. And next, under Presentations is the town hall meeting to receive comments on the Northeast Nebraska Solid Waste Coalition budget and the rates for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2015. Mr. Gates.
Yes, your honor. This is a requirement of the interlocal agreement with the created Solid Waste Coalition, albeit somewhere town hall meeting in Fremont and Columbus. We have to have this every year, preview the coalition's rate and budget before it's finally approved by the Coalition Board. Rates remain unchanged at $24 per ton and we assumed in this budget that Waste Connections would continue operation in landfill with no rate increase. Balance forward increase is about $350,000, which is about what the coalition's been running for cash from operations. Use fees decrease about $81,000 due to a slight decrease in tonnage and total coalition expenditures increase less than 1%, only going up about $13,000. Personnel costs decrease a little over $12,000, almost 12%. They get the normal cost of living increase that the city employees have in their budget, which is 2%, cost of living adjustment. But what caused the personnel costs to go down was a big decrease in the group insurance. We only got one employee that's on the coalition's health plan and we, a small group like that, of course, can't get good grades and we entered into memorandum of understanding with him after he became Medicare qualified and that decreased our costs considerably. The disposal fees decrease about $38,000 because of the slight decrease in tonnage I mentioned earlier. Other professional fees increase $60,000, well, almost $61,000, primarily due to engineering on, for the permit renewal. Every five years, we have to have, renew our permit and that takes some engineering and it seems kinda like that five years comes around, every time I turn around, it seems like we're doing another permit renewal. Capital outlays also budgeted increase about $74,700. Once again, that's primarily engineering, there's $70,000 budgeting for engineering for cell five, which will be the next cell we'll be opening up. And then besides the general fund budget was, which is what I was just talking about, we also have the closure, post-closure fund budget in the agenda packet. Total funds available for closure, post-closure increase a little over 8%, or from about five and a half million to almost $6 million in this budget. $259,000 of that increase is due to earnings on the funds we have in there, $165,000 is due to the current year funding. This fund should just continue to grow until we close the landfill, which is projected to be 29 years from now. So, my answer, any questions?
Council, any questions that you have for Randy? Okay, hearing none? I think you're good, Randy. Thank you. Okay, what we're gonna do then is move to item 35. At the request of Councilman Faust here. Consideration of Resolution 2014-29, approving the final allocation of levy authority for the Norfolk Airport Authority for fiscal year 2014-15, allowing the Norfolk Airport Authority to levy a property tax of $385,662 and approving future additional property tax of about $60,000 annually to fund the amount of debt service on a new hangar and related taxiway that exceeds rent on the new hangar. I am looking for a motion for consideration.
I'll make the motion, your honor.
Second.
All right, and you talking to this, Randy?
Glad to talk to this and I see there's also representatives from the airport here that may wanna talk to it also and available for questions. The airport every year asks the city to request an allocation of property tax authority. That was a law change, I think 10 or 15 years ago. This property tax asking is 3.5% more than what they're asking was last year and should keep their levy rate about the same as it was last year, since we're expecting an increase in assessment valuation of about that same amount. If you look in the agenda package, you'll see the resolution they submitted, which they passed on July 14th, actually had that $385,000 tax asking in it and then two supplemental tax askings. That was when they thought they might want to fund the taxiway and hangar with a one-time property tax increase, the portion that wasn't coming from the Department of Aeronautics and from the federal grant. Subsequently, they decided that to avoid a spike in property tax, would've been a jump up on a typical $100,000 home that we talk about, would've jumped up about $22 under that scenario and then went down to about $2 the next year. So to avoid that spike, they thought they would finance that over 10 years and that levels out the subsidy that is needed for the hangar to about $5 on a $100,000 home. They won't be needing that this coming year because they'll issue the debt this year with debt service coming due the next year. But that will be for about 10 years and as the mayor mentioned when she read the resolution, they requested that the council give them some type of indication that they would grant them that additional property tax needed for that subsidy now, which makes sense. If they're gonna be issuing that debt and constructing the hangar and taxiway, they need to know they have the property tax or conversely, if they're not gonna get the property tax, they need to know that before they borrow the money and construct the improvements. So I'd be glad to answer any questions and like I said, there's airport representatives here that can also speak to this issue.
All right. Do you wanna come forward, Dan? Do you have anything that you would like to? We'll let you and Terry sign in for us, state your name and sign in.
Yeah, Dan Gary is my name. I'm the chairman of the Norfolk Airport Authority.
I'm Terry Walker and I'm in Norfolk Airport, head of here.
Well, I think Randy explained it pretty well, what the resolution is about and why we're here. So basically, you know, we build the hangars instead of asking for a large amount one time, we finance it over 10 years, but then next year, we'll be back with an increase in budget of somewhere around the $60,000 out of over 10 years. That's, that's kinda the way we decided to cash flow it, but in order to do that, why then we'll be back here next year with an increase in budget that'll take, that'll ask that? So, it seems the best way to build the hangars. The, the hangars at the Norfolk Airport are completely full. Anybody that calls us right now and wants a hangar, we have to tell them, no, we don't have a hangar for you. And there's, there's few people that call. We don't take down their names and we really don't, don't keep a waiting list, so if you, I mean, they call up, most of them know where, they're going somewhere with their airplanes. So for economic development for the city of Norfolk, this is a place that I think we need to invest. The Norfolk Airport Authority thinks we needs to do this and it seems like a good investment for the community for economic development.
When we had our workshop, a couple comments were made about the hangar rates in surrounding areas. I did do a little research on that, I have some copies here. I don't have one for everybody though, but I could-
That'd be great. Yeah?
Ours is on the top.
Anything else you wanna share with us, Terry? Or I appreciate you taking the time to do that because that was requested of you.
Are you gonna present these numbers, Terry? I'm not gonna present them because they vary so much. There's a one, I don't think there are more than two airports that have the same size of the hangar. You know, the rates and the sizes vary so much that it's really, really hard to compare. They try to do a comparison that will just, like, one of each of everything.
So with that being said, Terry, do you feel that the rates that you have, we have here in our local airport are in a lot-
Actually, I think ours are kinda low.
Terry? Keep the microphone. Terry?
For-
Terry? Can you go to the microphone? Turn the microphone to you a little bit, so we make sure that you're being recorded.
Actually, I think the rates in our area are somewhat low. There are a couple of them that seem a little higher than others, but in the long run, when it averages out, I think Norfolk's pretty low on hangar rent for what we have to offer because a lot of those other hangars have heat, maybe running water in them, different kinds of doors.
Okay. Go ahead.
You're at full occupancy right now in the hangars?
Completely full.
And how many, how many years have they been completely full?
Three years.
And when was the last time you had a rate increase?
That's on that sheet and that varies. We had in, in the three rows of T-hangers, we had a rate increase, I think it was 2005. Then we had on L and C rows increase in 2012.
And how large were the increases, do you remember?
$10 and $15 per unit.
Per unit and as a, what's the typical rate out there now? Is it $100 a month or $150 a month?
Probably between 80 and 90 because they start out like at 70 and they go clear as high as, we have a couple of them rent for $165. That's just the T-hanger, so 65 and 75.
Okay. So the proposed hangar is, houses how many aircraft?
Eight.
Eight? And with all, are those, do you anticipate, anticipate those being corporate rentals or private rentals?
We have no idea. And we have, we are also going to incorporate into our rate fees, like maybe an economic development corporate rate if someone wanted to come to town. We can't put a dollar amount on that right now because we don't know who that is, when that's gonna happen, but we would have something to offer them. Like maybe first three months for free or so much every year or less than, like in bringing a business to Norfolk.
And so, if building the hangars now, there's a shortfall and it, that's what we're really looking to finance, is the shortfall on, on rents?
The, there's two sources of money available, AIP funds, I don't know, do you guys have this sheet?
Yes.
We do. Use your mic, will you, Dan, so we're making sure we're-
This sheet that has the cost estimate, I don't know whether that's in your package or not, I didn't, I didn't look through your package, but okay. If you notice, there's two columns there. There's AIP funds and hangar loan amount. AIP funds is, is funds that are, a grant that's given to us, that's 90% government-funded, AIP-funded, and 10% local funds. So down there at the very bottom of the sheet, in order to do the $297,000, the estimated construction on that portion of it, we have to put in $29,000. The rest of the funds come from a revolving hangar fund, which is a 0% interest fund from the state of Nebraska. And we, we use that money and then we pay it back over 10 years, so, and they only fund 70%. We have to, we have to kick in the other 30%. So that's the 210,000 in the other column. So we fund, we fund a total of 240,561 on the front end of the construction, okay? Then we're, we're short, so we, we take that over 10 years, but then we're short, the hangar rents don't quite make the payments on the, on the revolving loan that we're paying back. So then there's, there's some we gotta add to it every year. I don't remember what that is.
So what is that shortfall then?
What's that?
What is the shortfall?
Well, it looks like it's 58,373.
Per year?
Per year. Over the next 10 years. Now, the hangars that we have done this for in the past that are all paid for, well then, that's all, that's all, that's all income, so, you know, after the 10 years, it's, it's positive.
Uh huh. Any other questions, council?
And that, these costs are based on, your sheet is, I mean, who came up with the estimate that way?
Also Associates Consulting Group and Nebraska Department of Aeronautics worked on this together to arrive at numbers.
Because it, and I'll tell you, the only thing that caught me off guard on it was, and you probably realize, there was a six T-hanger in Valentine bid out about a month ago and it really makes these numbers look bad. I missed it.
Well, they look high.
These numbers here?
Yeah.
Are real low.
They are.
The sixth place T-hanger in Valentine ran way over, I mean, it was only a sixth place with very little paving on it, it almost was 3/4 million dollars.
How about dirt work?
How about what?
Dirt work on it? Was there like extra dirt work?
There was, no, I was, I was looking at it based on the square footage just of the hangar and the hangar itself ran $76 a square foot and they've only got $40 a square foot. So that's like $36 a square foot. So my, my question is, how far do we go out before we say, no, we're not gonna do it? Just because we have this authorization to go ahead and do it if suddenly the thing is costing, in, in their case, it costs nearly $300,000 more or almost 40% more than the engineer's estimate to complete the project.
Does like location make any difference?
All, that's not what I'm asking.
He wants to know when we're gonna cap, well, if the bids come in that way, we just won't do it. I mean, we can't, we can't live by these numbers and if our bids come in over this, let's just don't do it. Or, we'll come back to you next year and say, well, hey, that didn't work, let's try this.
Yeah, it, I mean, it was something that popped on out and somebody had sent this to me actually about a month ago when it occurred, so.
I thought these numbers were high and I was hoping we could do quite a bit better than what, what they-
The, the nested T, just the material itself was more than, was half of, of the $40 a square foot, so it was almost $20 a square foot. Is it a 54-foot hangar or do you know how deep it is?
Forty, oh, how deep it is? It's 45, the doors are 45 feet wide.
Yeah, no, I realize that, the depth is-
Thirty-four feet maybe?
Maybe.
Back to back.
Doubt it. That seems awful, you know?
Sure.
Short.
That seems really short. I'm guessing probably in the area of 54, maybe 50, but.
I didn't bring that paper, but I very definitely, I think we should lower than our budget, I mean if-
And that's, that's all that I was getting at was, you know, granted, there's some leeway in there, but if it's, as in their case, they were 40% over the budget and they still went ahead, I'm just going, that reflects back then that you're gonna have to borrow more and then the $60,000 is gonna turn into something more than that per year, so, considerably more than that, so.
And I, I wonder if we're not being asked to make some decisions on something this evening where all the facts aren't in.
Well, we don't know, we don't know the bid price till we take the bid, so we're working on-
Well, we're talking size of the hangar and all that, doesn't seem like-
Oh, I can, I can get the size of the hangar, I just don't have it with me.
Well, they're, they're exactly a, a hangar and they're, they're based on the size of the aircraft that goes in, so. You just caught me by-
Is it similar size to existing hangars right now?
That are already out there?
Yes, yeah. Is it bigger or smaller, same size?
Probably mid-size, there's three or four different sizes that are out there.
Yeah, okay.
The regular hangars that we have now do not, they accommodate the older aircraft. Newer aircraft have taller tails and wider wings. There's a lot of older aircraft out there, but they're in those states.
So let me ask, if we were to approve the final allocation that you're requesting tonight, but yet when it comes time for the bids to be opened and as Councilman Langy has suggested, there's possibility of, and Dan, you made the comment, then we don't go forward, how does that affect what we're doing with allowing for the allocation of the dollars you're requesting here tonight?
Well, we don't build the hangars, we don't need the $60,000.
Right. So at that point, it would be, the budget would be-
Would be back to where it is.
Back to where it is today.
Yeah, yeah.
And with, with that, not really starting until next year.
That's why it doesn't-
Right, yeah, okay.
Doesn't affect this year's budget, affects next year's budget.
Twenty, yeah, you're right.
Randy, when would you have to have your figures to finish the budget?
We have to by state law, give them their allocation by September 1st. So if you wanted to, you could approve the base allocation and amend that resolution, taken off the last and be a father resolved part and address that after they get their bids, if you would want to go that route.
Well, that might not be until next spring.
It would be six months for the bid.
But you won't be incurring that, will you be incurring the debt or making any commitments at that point in time? In other words, you'd have your base allocation of $385,000, but not the commitment for an extra $60,000 until we knew for sure what the bids came in at.
Is there anything with that for everything to go to bid and engage as engineer services at a cost? So if the bid didn't, didn't stand out, we just have to pay the engineer?
Yeah, we would estimate, we can, we can figure out.
That would be something if, if the bids did come in way high like happened in Valentine, you could come back to the council and discuss it with the council and decide what to do at that point in time.
Do you know how many requests you get by week or by month? And then when you do get requests, do you ask what size of planes, so you have an idea what size of hangar you need?
They're mostly just your common size T-hangers.
I don't know what common is.
It's probably the size that we're building, it's the size that we're building.
But as far as his question on how many requests you get on it-
Oh, when we had our workshop, I had that. I suppose in the last year, we've had 12 requests and we're not having, we don't have a place for them, so they move on.
12 requests and is that then permanent storage, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
What about for, is, are these planned for just being permanent storage or is this planned for temporary, I guess, flybys, stay overnights?
Temp, or for permanent storage. And if one was empty and somebody came in overnight and we needed the hangar, we'd use it, I mean, but they are for tenants.
Am I reading this right then? Are we looking at a total cost of like a million dollars and then our annual revenue off these hangars are $18,000?
Yes.
For the 10 years, then after that, it would be paid for and the, the revenue off the hangars has to go.
What's an average life of a hangar?
Oh, boy.
10 years?
We have 40-year-old hangars out there now. Maintenance, they do maintenance on them or some kind of maintenance on them when we report. Maintenance, they do maintenance on them, or some guys do maintenance on them when we require it.
So-
I think the oldest ones are built sixty-five.
What, what would be the revenue generated on an annual basis off the new hangars?
Um, eighteen, that shows, do you have Jerome's copy here?
I, I, I do, I'm, I'm just trying to understand it a little bit. So the estimated annual hangar revenue of eighteen-two forty? That's the revenue you're anticipating off of the eight new hang-
Yes, eight days, yep.
Leaving us with a, a shortfall of fifty-eight-seven thirty-seven?
Yes.
Terry, when you, when you have, when you look at your sister city's airports out there and, and speak with your counterparts, what's kind of the atmos, I, for lack of a better word, the atmosphere of other airports? Is it, is it kind of common practice to have a subsidy?
Yes.
Involved in the hangar rental business? I mean, do, do other airports see us get subsidized?
Right, they, they say there's really no way that they can have hangars unless they have subsidies, because if, you can't pay for them on the length of a loan. It's the, what comes back into the city with the extra people coming, goes back into taxes, which goes back into revenue for the city.
That's basically how-
It's common practice for the other-
Yeah, this revolving hangar, well, it's stated in the rest, is, is used, everybody basically uses that.
So the, the impact to the city for additional taxes that people will pay by coming here and using the hangars?
Well, I think that's economic development.
What?
The people that are, who come in hangars now, come and shop in Norfolk, they use, it'd be the same scenario.
So the-
And those other hangars you paid for, they were on revolving hangar loans also.
So the, the people that are renting the hangars now are not residents of the city of Norfolk?
They're from all over, and, and the surrounding communities in Norfolk.
So then, and then they-
It's not just taxpayers of the city of Norfolk.
Okay.
But their families, and what if they come here and use our schools and our, our other tax base? Like the water park and the library.
So the, the hangar rentals are not generally rented to people that already live here?
Oh, we have people out there that live here.
So what percentage of the eight hangars that you're talking about would you anticipate would be rented to folks that don't live here and would therefore make that economic development impact?
Well, I think if they hanged a plane here and basted here, that they would be using this community as their base. I don't think we'd have somebody come from Fremont and keep an airplane here and drive back and forth.
Well, no, but I, I park my car in my garage here every night, and I use this as my base, and I spend my money here. So are you telling me that the folks that are gonna be renting the hangars are residents of the town, and they're gonna be supporting the, the community by their taxes, and they're, they're paying school taxes and all that kind of stuff?
That would be people that were gonna come here.
So would then-
Or maybe want, want, have a plane here now, but we didn't have room for it.
Okay.
Well, one of the things that's a little bit out of balance there is, the, the airport is funded by the people that live within the city limit only. But we're a regional airport, and, and you know, people, people all around us, farmers, any, anybody, there's a lot of people that are outside, I mean, um, EVM, um, NUCOR, all of them are outside the city limit, they don't pay any taxes on the airport. If there was something I could change, you know, this whole deal is, I wish that, I wish that everybody that has an advantage or, or uses the airport or gets an economic advantage about, out of the airport, it would be added to their tax pay. But when I approached the, um, the county commissioners, they say, "Well, good luck with that, Dan." So, so, so it's a, the taxpayers right inside the city limit, just right on the edge, fund the whole works at the airport.
Dan, when was the last time we did any, add any hangars to the airport? When was the last time that took place?
Well, in twenty-ten, we built two corporate hangars.
Two corporate hangars in twenty-ten? And was this financed the same way in twenty-ten?
No, we financed that, we borrowed money on that.
And you were able to cash flow it without coming to, did it come to council for increase in levying?
No.
We had, we had, we had something for it, I can't remember one.
I guess I'm trying to get, this is a fairly common practice to build the hangars.
Definitely.
And how many total hangars at the airport that you rent?
We have thirty-five T hangars, that doesn't include our larger hangars that house a few aircraft at a time. But those that we actually rent out, the tenants that have hangars, there will be up thirty, thirty-six T hangars.
And, and that's how many planes typically?
They're all full with aircraft, we have no, nothing else in our hangars but aircraft. We don't allow any other kind of storage.
No, that's kind of, that's kind of the common practice. I mean, if you, if we use this revolving hangar loan, and if we use AIP fund, they don't wanna come around and see race cars parked in our hangar, so we don't allow that.
Neither do we, Dan.
Yeah, okay.
Appreciate that. Other questions? This is, you know, this is a lot to mull over. And again, Terry, you, we're gonna make sure between you and I that this council is getting updates as things happen out there. I know you feel you're drilled every time you come before us, but it's not often enough, and I think that's part of the issue. So, we'll make it a point to make sure that, yep, we know what's going on and how things are going for you, so. Any other questions before we move forward with the, um, consideration of the resolution? If not, then I would ask you to vote.
Voting in favor of the resolution, council members, Granquist, Langy, Merrill, Clausen, excuse me, Murin, Moaning, Faust. Voting against the resolution, councilman File, motion carries. Resolution, excuse me, two thousand fourteen, twenty-nine is adopted.
Okay. Thank you again for being here, and with that, we're gonna go forward then with our public hearings. We'll get back to, um, first public hearing, which is to amend section twenty-seven dash four-oh-one to address the special designated liquor license in the land use matrix, to make it possible to issue special designated liquor licenses as permitted use in all zoning districts, and to make other various changes in additions to the land use matrix. I will open this public hearing and look for, Trent, you gonna give us a little information on this?
Mayor and council, section twenty-seven four-oh-one is a big section, as you can tell. Typically, when we address this section of the code, uh, we pass this around to all the staff and all the departments. So if anybody has any changes, uh, we can kind of do it all at one time since it is a, a large section of our code. The, uh, I'll start out with the, uh, kind of alphabetically here. Um, a lot of these are, we're just aligning the matrix with our code. So, uh, some of them are just housekeeping items, so to speak. There is an addition of asphalt mixing plants, uh, to be permitted with a conditional use permit in I-1. There are several areas of I-1, we've had no request for, uh, anything as such. It's just an industrial area, if somebody was gonna put a mixing plant, uh, we're gonna do that with a conditional use permit. Athletic and play fields, uh, conditional use permit in I-1, that is an addition. The, you can have an arena or a fieldhouse for baseball, softball, and such in I-1, where you can have a batting facility indoors, but then, our code didn't allow for an athletic field when it's nice out, to do it outside of the batting area or the batting, uh, fieldhouse. So that kind of aligns that together. Uh, non-residential structures, uh, conditional use permit, this just is alignment with our code now. Uh, the matrix didn't speak to it, uh, for a watchman, uh, caretaker. There were some other, um, uh, things just like that, fraternal, civic, and social associations. Everything, a lot of terms in the matrix, you can reciprocate it, but with another term. And if you reciprocate some of these, uh, starting out with civic or fraternal, we had differences in the matrix, so we just aligned all of those, uh, so they were the same. So that's, uh, that was all housekeeping items. Uh, kennels and breeding, boarding and breeding, we allowed for that in code, we didn't allow it in our matrix, so we conformed them, made them the same. The addition of the special designated liquor license, uh, that, that is a addition. And we do a lot of special designated liquor licenses, I think you get the privilege of doing all them, Beth. Um, I don't deal much with them, but we do allow them in a lot of areas that our matrix didn't, uh, didn't speak to at all. So whether it's Pheasants Forever or whatever group, or a church organization, a music organization that asks for a designated license, so that is a permitted item in all districts. There's an addition of museums in I-2, uh, play fields and athletic fields. Again, that's a reciprocal of athletic and play fields. And another addition is the recycling plants. Right now, we have recycling plant, but we didn't differentiate between all the different types of, uh, recycling. Nowadays, you can recycle just about anything, uh, whether it's, uh, nuclear waste, uh, whatever. Uh, there's a lot of things that I think that, uh, the citizens of Norfolk and staff and, uh, all of you that, that you should have a say-so in. There might be, uh, let's use that for an example, we, we may not want something too harsh in the middle of our city. So I think that the planning commission and everybody needs a, a voice on that. And them are common definitions that a lot of other cities use now. So municipal solid waste, uh, just a trash, your normal household stuff. And then, that also separates it from industrial solid waste, which gets you into everything from, uh, you name it. Uh, there's a lot, it's a big category. So them are both additions, um, and conditional use permit, to give us a voice as well on those. There was an addition of storage and warehousing of non-hazardous products as a conditional use in C-1. So that's an added item. And the rest is, uh, I think that's it, so. I'd be happy to answer any questions, it's a long one, I-
Yep, Trent, I would tell you that certainly we appreciate all your efforts on this, and if you miss something, I don't know that any of one of us would've caught it, but I'm, um, trusting that what you're doing is the housekeeping of it. And again, I know it's a lot of time and effort, but appreciate your efforts there. Is there any questions, or anything for him on this? Okay, if not, Beth, you got a planning commission report for us?
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on August fifth, two thousand fourteen, for an amendment to section twenty-seven dash four-oh-one to address special designated liquor licenses in the land use matrix, to make it possible to issue special designated liquor licenses as permitted uses in all zoning districts, and to make other various changes and additions to the land use matrix. The planning commission recommended approval of the amendment on a seven-to-zero vote.
All right, with that, I will close this hearing and look for consideration of ordinance number five-three-oh-six, amending section twenty-seven dash four-oh-one, addressing what you have just heard.
Your Honor, I move consideration of ordinance five-three-zero-six on first reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, short title, Beth?
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend section twenty-seven dash four-oh-one to address special designated liquor licenses in the land use matrix, to make it possible to issue a special designated liquor license as permitted use in all zoning districts, and to make other various changes and additions to the land use matrix, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
All right, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty-three-oh-six carries on first reading.
Your Honor, as we did receive any negative comments or anything along that line, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance fifty-three-zero-six on second and third reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second to suspend and actually pass, um, ordinance number five-three-oh-six on second and third reading. Any discussion of, of that request? If not, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty-three-oh-six carries on second and third.
All right, and we'll move on then to the next public hearing, which is to amend the extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction map of the city of Norfolk as authorized by section sixteen dash nine-oh-two, R-R-S twenty-twelve. I will open the hearing, and again, I think, Trent, you're on.
Mayor and council, again, this is something that, uh, was brought up when we had a lot of eyes looking at the off-road ramps when we're, when they were going through, uh, their rezone and, and some conditional use permits and stuff out there. Scott had noticed that on the map, it didn't look like it was quite two miles. And when we had, uh, annexed the O-Car area, or the O-C, I think it was O-Car addition, correct me if I'm wrong, Dennis, but I think that's the one. But anyhow, uh, we did not extend our two-mile at that time. So, uh, we had, I think Dean had redone this, engineering had looked at this, and when they redid the map, then it brings in two-hundred-and-forty more acres, uh, of annexed property in Stanton County, so.
Okay, any questions for Trent? Hearing nothing? Do you have a planning commission report, Beth?
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on August fifth, two thousand fourteen, to consider an amendment to the extraterritorial jurisdiction map of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska. The amendment, uh, of the map extends the two-mile district due to an annexation in the southeast section of the city several years ago. This corrects the map to, uh, and aligns with the city's limit, boundary. The planning commission recommended approval on a seven-to-zero vote.
All right, and with that, I will close this hearing and look for consideration of ordinance number five-three-oh-seven, amending as was discussed.
Your Honor, I introduce ordinance fifty-three-oh-seven on first reading. Second.
Motion with a second to, for consideration of ordinance five-three-oh-seven. Any further discussion or questions? If not, a short title, Beth?
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend the extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction map of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, as authorized by NRS section sixteen dash nine-oh-two, R-R-S twelve, twenty-twelve, to include the southeast quarter, northwest quarter, section six, township twenty-three north, the northwest quarter, northeast quarter, section six, township twenty-three north, the east half, southeast quarter, section thirty-one, township twenty-four north, and the west half, northwest quarter, section thirty-two, township twenty-four north, all in range one, east of the sixth PM, Stanton County, Nebraska, to provide when the ordinance is in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form.
And with that, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty-three-oh-seven carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I move we suspend the rules and pass ordinance fifty-three-oh-seven on second and third.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion with a second to suspend the rules and pass on second and third, ordinance number five-three-oh-seven. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty-three-oh-seven carries on second and third.
All right. Next, we will have, um, I'm gonna open the public hearing to consider feasibility of amending the present comprehensive plan at twenty-five-oh-one East Omaha Avenue from commercial to rural residential at the request of Joyce E. Crowley. And as well, we'll open the public hearing, same, uh, at the request of Joyce E. Crowley, for a zoning change from agriculture and I-1 light industrial district to RR rural residential at twenty-five-oh-one East Omaha Avenue. Opening this public hearing, and is this you again, Trent, that are speaking for us tonight?
I think so, Mayor.
Okay.
Uh, this was brought to us, um, there is a house that sits north off of Omaha Avenue there. It's a resident, it's been there quite some time. There, what we, when I first looked at, it looked like Granview Drive went up there, which is Stanton County-Madison County line, but it is actually a private drive which everybody uses. In two thousand three, or two, I think, end of two thousand three, they had rezoned that whole north portion, um, up north of Cornhusker into RR, and there was a plan of to, to develop that. of Cornhusker into RR, and there was a plan to, to develop that. And some of you might remember some of that, but I, I think then that went away. And I see one laughing, I don't know, I'm not going to ask. But, so, that, that came about, and when they rezoned that, it was egg. So, that house, we created a, a non-conforming egg lot when we rezoned that northern portion to RR. This would make it conforming to the three-acre rule to RR and also to DDQ for the septic system with minimum acreage of three acres. So, that was brought to us. We needed access to it, so we needed a flag lot going down to the right-of-way. And that's where the portion of the I-1, the flag lot goes down through the portion of I-1. It's just a small, narrow driveway going up to it. So, that's kind of the story behind it. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Counsel, any questions for Trent? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else that wants to come forward and speak to this or may have questions of this? Okay.
I got it. Listen back to Cornhusker's business at all? You know their daily business routine?
No, Councilman. It, it, it lines up. They're going to use that private drive that they're using now, but legally, I had to have access to it. And the reason I put the flag lot over to the other side is that for future planning, if Granview Drive ever does go in, I didn't want a flag lot in the ditch, basically, if we ever proceed with Granview in the future. That's why it's on the other side.
Any other questions at all? If not, Beth, we'll turn to you for your planning commission reports.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on August 8th, 2014 at the request of Joyce Crowley to amend the City of Norfolk's comprehensive plan from commercial to rural residential at 2501 East Omaha. She applied for a zoning change to RR rural residential on the north part of this property to separate it from the south parcel that is zoned I-1. This portion of the parcel is, has a home on it, and the comprehensive plan reflects the area as commercial. The zone change request requires the amendment to the comp plan. The planning commission voted zero, seven to zero to approve.
With that, then, I will close both these public hearings, and I will ask for consideration of ordinance number 5308, which will be amending the comprehensive plan from commercial to rural residential at 2501 East Omaha Avenue.
Your Honor, I'd offer, sorry, 5308. For consideration.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion with a second for consideration of ordinance number 5308. If no further discussion, how about a short title, Beth?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the future land use map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
All right. And with that, if you would please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5308 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I move we change the rules and, and pass ordinance 5308 on second and third.
Second.
We have a motion with a second to suspend the rules, as Councilman Faust has asked for, and pass on second and third. If no further discussion, again, let's vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5308 carries on second and third.
And then we'll look for consideration of ordinance number 5309, changing the zoning district from a agricultural district and I-1 light industrial to RR rural residential at same 2501 East Omaha Avenue.
I'll make the motion for ordinance 5309 on first reading.
And we have a second?
I'll second.
Hearing no further discussion? How about a short title on this, Beth?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
All right. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5309 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I move we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5309 on second and third.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5309 on second and third reading. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5309 carries on second and third.
All right. Next, we're looking for consideration of Resolution 2014-26, approving the final plat and the subdivision agreement of Blueberry Hills Second Subdivision. Do I have a motion for consideration?
I introduce Resolution 2014-26.
Second.
Thanks, Councilman Faust. That being said, Trent, everything in place for us on this? We're ready to go forward?
Yes, Your Honor.
All right. Unless anyone has any questions, I think we're ready to vote. Please do.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2014-26 is adopted.
All right. Next is consideration of ordinance number 5310 to amend Section 3-11 and 3-13 to change references from the Elkhorn Cabin to Elkhorn Lodge and to prohibit open containers of alcohol in public parking areas and to reconcile open container violations with the Nebraska State Statute 60-621108, allowing for open containers to be allowed in limousines and charter or special party service buses. Again, I'm looking for consideration of the ordinance.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of ordinance number 5310. Second.
Who's speaking to this one?
I can.
Okay. Very good. I was going to look to you, Trent, but.
I'm done.
Mayor and City Council, Captain Don Miller of the Police Department, as I think most of you know me. This is simply an, an adjustment to make the city ordinance match the state statute. Currently, the state statute, I'm going to back up. Obviously, it's been known as Elkhorn Cabin for a long time. That's the first part of this. With the destruction of that property and adding the Elkhorn Lodge, it's just changing the wording in the ordinance to match that. The second part of this is state statute 6211.08 allows for open containers of alcohol and limousines and special party buses. Currently, our ordinance is restrict that. This is just rewording the ordinance to match state statute. It's that simple.
I like things that simple. Appreciate that. Does anyone have any questions at all for?
The open containers in the parking area doesn't have anything to do with the lodge.
No, that's, that's also part of the state statute on private parking, large commercial properties, not residential. We're talking about public parking areas.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll stay here, I may be needed for your response.
All right. Do we have a short title on this, Beth?
Yes. An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska to amend Section 3-11 and Section 3-13 of the official city code to change reference from Elkhorn Cabin to Elkhorn Lodge to prohibit open containers of alcohol in public parking areas and to reconcile open container violations with state statute allowing for open containers to be in limousines and chartered party buses to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
All right. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5310 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance number 5310 on second and third reading. Second.
All right. We heard the motion and a second to suspend the rules and pass ordinance number 5310 on second and third reading. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5310 carries on second and third.
All right. And next, we're looking for consideration of ordinance number 5311 to amend Section 24-153, Section 24-156, and 24-159 of the official city code to prohibit the loading and the unloading of passengers where signs prohibiting such are posted.
Your Honor, I'd offer for consideration ordinance 5311.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion with a second. You're going to come forward and tell us all about this.
Mayor and City Council, this is a situation where currently we have numerous no parking areas, major thoroughfares being, an example would be Benjamin Forest Street, Omaha Avenue. Current code also allows for temporarily stopping in those no parking zones for loading and unloading of passengers. Well, the situation has come up with people loading and unloading passengers, being their children, at several schools around town. Obviously, there's some safety concerns with people doing so, and I'll use the middle school, that's one of our most significant examples that we've had specific issues with. People will drop their children off on First Street with all of the heavy traffic in the morning with the schools. And we've argued some other ordinances and some other violations, but by making this change, I'm asking that we can place signs that say no loading and unloading in certain specific areas, being on First Street and Benjamin Avenue, several areas around the schools. This will amend the code to allow us to place these signs. The next part of this, the resolution, if this, the ordinance would pass, the resolution is the next part, part specifically outlining the locations we would like to place the signs. In the future, if we have additional issues, we can, we can, the ones I'm specifically looking at right now are Norfolk Middle School, Washington School at First and Omaha Avenue, and the junior high, which with Pazwalk being a busy street. This does not affect any of the existing designated loading and unloading areas of any of the schools. This is just to keep the people from dropping their children off in a dangerous location and signing it so that they know that it's not allowed.
Makes sense.
Is this something that the school system is in agreement to also?
Yeah, the schools are very frustrated with some of the issues. I had conversations with the principal, specifically at the middle school. And when we were enforcing it, we had some enforcement actions, and she made a point to contact me and thanking me for our efforts, being concerned for, and that's at the middle school. For the safety of people.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else with any questions or comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here. With that, Beth, I'm betting you have a short title.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska to amend Section 24-153, Section 24-156, and Section 24-159 of the official city code to prohibit the unloading of passengers where normally allowed when signs prohibiting the unloading passengers are posted, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
All right. And with that, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5311 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5311 on second and third reading. Second.
All right. Again, we have a motion before us to suspend the rules and approve ordinance number 53 on second and third reading. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5311 carries on second and third.
All right. And we'll look for consideration of the Resolution 2014-27 to place no loading or unloading signs on Pazwalk Avenue near Norfolk Junior High, First Street and Omaha Avenue near Washington School, and First Street and Benjamin Avenue near Norfolk Middle School. Much discussion, so I think everyone understands the request here. If nothing further, I want to ask you to vote. Oh, I'm sorry, I need consideration. I'm jumping ahead here.
I'd ask for consideration of Resolution 2014-27.
Second.
All right. Knowing all that, without further discussion, I'm going to ask that you please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2014-27 is adopted.
All right. Next would be consideration of Resolution 2014-28, submitting a ballot question to the registered voters of the City of Norfolk at the general election to be held November 4th, 2014, authorizing the collection of an additional one-half of 1% sales and use tax for 36 month, months, with all of the revenues generated to be used for library renovation, expansion, and equipment. I'm looking for consideration of such resolution.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of Resolution 2014-28. Second.
All right. We have a motion with a second. Discussion at all here? I think certainly we're all well aware of what it is that we're attempting to do here. There's been a lot of great discussion. Youth leadership was pretty excited to hear this conversation last night as well. So, unless someone has something to add to you, I would look for you to place your vote.
I just have one comment quickly, Your Honor. At the end of the 36 months, this half percent will go away, right?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make that clarification, because I've had some people that have contacted me and said, once you get a tax, it never goes away. So, I just want to have that clarification that at the end of 36 months.
That requires specificity in the language, to be clear.
Okay. Thank you.
Not a second vote.
We're going to let the people vote on it now, and they'll have to vote on it again, right?
If something else comes up in the future.
Exactly. So, they could vote on it.
I have, you know, with this 7.4 million we're asking to, for the library expansion, if there was private donations, you know, to come about as this tax is being collected, how's that offshoot the, you know, if they go out and do some collecting and raise some funds, maybe they raise 3 million, who knows? And, you know, so all of a sudden, you need to collect 4.4 million. What does that do with your levy or with the half percent?
Well, it doesn't change the levy and doesn't change the amount that you collect, if that's the question that you, you're asking. I think what it does do is it has, enhances the ability for the community to enhance their library even further. I mean, there's many things that go into siting a library or improving a library, renovating a library, including, and Jessica and the foundation can speak directly to this, but including all the circulation that they have, you know, and improvements that they can make. And there's, there's the building, and then there's the contents for, in the simple terms. And I think it just goes to enhance the, the contents and the services that the community can provide.
I'm just hoping not every, not everything goes on to the taxpayer. We try to go out and solicit some private donations.
Absolutely. And, you know, Jessica and the foundation can speak directly to that if you'd like, but I know they're excited to, to try to raise some private dollars as well. So, it's a great point, Council.
I think they will. I think they'll, I think they'll do well doing that, I really do.
Yeah, I think so, too.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions or comments? All right. Then I would ask for your vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2014-28 is adopted.
All right. Then we'll take, looking at the consent agenda, consideration, number 11 there, consideration of approval of a special designated liquor license for Goodies Grill LLC, 105 South Second Street, Battle Creek, Nebraska, to serve beer, wine, and distilled spirits at the loft, 311 West Norfolk Avenue on, is it Tuesday? October 4th, 2014, from 4:00 PM to 1:00 AM for dance and reception.
Need a motion, please.
Yeah, I need a motion for approval of this, if I could.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in, with a second. Is there someone that wants to come forward and speak to this? You want to just come forward and state your name and, and, and speak to this for us, just so that we make sure that we do have it right for you? Is it a Tuesday night as well?
No. My name is Mike Goodwater, owner of Goodies Grill. I made a typo when I made the application. It should be Saturday, October 4th.
Okay. Saturday, October 4th. Okay. I don't think there's anything else that we really need from.
The people weren't real happy with their dance and stuff on Tuesday night.
All right. I appreciate you being here. Sorry that we went through it this way, but I think it'll work great. So, we have a motion with a second. You've heard the reasoning on this. I think you're ready to make a vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
All right. I don't think there's anything else on the agenda, so with that, we are adjourned. adjourned.